To step out, so we're okay. Right? No, I don't think you have to step out, you just have to accuse yourself in the bill. Right, I mean which form is it, 50%? Is that what we need, Stephen, for form, 50%? So we went on that page, that one on here.
Timing.
Can we give a few more minutes to see if anybody else shows up? Sorry.
Test. Works. All right, I guess we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first item is reviewing and approving the minutes from the November 4th meeting. Do I have a motion? Okay. Have a second? So Linda and then Doug. Should be popping up on your screens. Did it work? Okay, it passed? Okay, I didn't see it come up. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into items for consideration.
Good afternoon, Chad Meisberg, your GeoBond Program Manager. So, item one's not up there yet. There we go. So, we have a few items today, and most of these are going to be matched with ARPA funds. So, as we move through there, we'll try to designate which ones are that, so to help out with the process. So our first project here, of course, is, we want to add lights to the athletic fields at Stars and Stripes. It's on the south side of Lake Hefner. As the increase, the lights will help go ahead and increase the hours of service that we can offer to the public, to utilize the fields. All right, it's not a problem, we can wait if you want.
Had a quick question while we're waiting, are there lights on the fields now, or is it just?
Not on those two diamonds.
Okay. And that's what this would be, be adding to it?
So Chad, did you say there's lights on the ballfields now, or not?
No, to my knowledge, there's not lights. I mean, on the outside of the one there that you see on the south side, but it's still not lit on the west. So we're adding lights to the west side, all the way up, filling in the gaps on the south diamond, and then lights on the north side of the south diamond, on the south side of the north diamond, all the way back around to make that work.
Okay, thanks.
A? No, we have Stars and Stripes Park. Well, why don't you guys just tell me what one it is, and then we'll go to that one quick. And we can adjust this presentation and put it back in when we get it there. I'll just go in your order. Item one is which? Sure, we'll get there.
It's the street widening, South Post Road.
There we go. Okay. Crystal. Crystal, are you logged in? Okay, so we'll go with this project first. This is our second phase of Post Road. We're putting in a brand-new water line, removing it from Douglas, moving it over to Post. With the base expansion, Douglas is going to be closed in the future. As such, this is just that last phase of those sets of plans. We've already done 74th from Douglas to Post, and then Post up to 44th. All that's been through and approved, and this is under construction. So now we need to take from, I'm sorry, from 59th to 44th, and then back over to Douglas. And so, our ask today is for the $4 million in unlisted funds from our streets proposition. The base, it base is expanding. So actually, the majority of this project, both phases, has been supplemented with ARPA funds. So. There you go. Any questions?
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to a vote on that. Yeah, we can do verbal.
Recommend approval?
Is there a second?
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What is the second item?
GeoBond Proposition 1 of the 2017.
Bridge replacement.
Okay. Oh, there we go. So, another one of our ARPA-funded projects that also is, has bond funds on it, of course. So, this project is the twin, we call them the twin bridges, but it's northwest 10th Street. It's over Grand Boulevard, just to the northwest of the property of the fairgrounds, which is also the city of Oklahoma City. These two bridges are in dire need of repair. Well, when we got into there, we found out they needed to be replaced. And so, at the time of the 2017 bond program, these were thought of just being repaired. So that was back in 2015. Since then, they've deteriorated at a much quicker rate. And so we've had to move towards a full replacement. We were fortunate enough to have some ARPA funds put towards the project, but we still have a shortfall, especially with COVID involved as well. So, it's come out to that almost $3 million number. The street one, why we're using the street Prop 1, which is street funds, is we're going to, all that grading and everything that we have to do up to the bridge is eligible for those funds. And that's where we're at on that one. Any questions?
So basically, street, not bridge. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Think we can entertain a motion?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
The next one, Kevin? Oh, I'm sorry, what is the next one?
Pilot Community Center.
Oh, okay, great. So, we have some older dilapidated rec centers. And so we've been fortunate again with some ARPA funds that come in and help us go ahead and bring those back to ground level, demolish those, and then put in green spaces. And this is one of the two projects that we're going to talk about today. So this site, once we go ahead and demolish this and remove the building, the structure and everything else, clean it up nice and what we need, this site will be improved by restoring it to some green space and some natural landscape areas. So, this project is just $100,000 needing to move forward with it. Lots of windows, right? No, it's not much to them.
Probably hadn't been used in a while.
This one I do not believe has. It's the old Pilot Community Center, so it's got some age on it. Well, it's 60 years old, over, so.
Any questions?
The Parks Department had done an extensive review of a lot of their community centers, and there were a bunch that the Parks Director identified, that the engineers said that it would just be way too costly to try to redo them or fix them up. So, a lot of them are just in really, really bad shape.
I recommend approval. If we don't have any questions.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Linda was the motion. We haven't got a second yet.
Second?
Crystal or Doug? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. What's the next one?
Stars and Stripes.
Stars and Stripes, okay. Go back to our first item. Stars and Stripes. This request is to go ahead, and as you can see, there's, some lights have been installed in the past on the two diamonds. And the idea is to go ahead and install, fill in some of the gaps on the south diamond, but the north diamond to go ahead and light that. What it'll do for us is we'll extend our hours of operation for the residents that come out and utilize those facilities through the program. Today, we're asking for $557,000 in unlisted funds to make that happen. Any questions?
This fee basis for the participants, and then we'd know when the light needs to be on and off.
I am not familiar enough with parks programming, so I cannot answer that.
Can you answer whether the lights will be on or off? Not whether they're?
Beyond when it's being used? I don't know.
They're not, it's not continual, every time it gets dusk, they go on, whether they're used or not.
I can, I can look into that and let you know if you'd like. Well, I mean, follow up with it.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion to recommend? Doug, move? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Doug was the first. Crystal was the second.
Lincoln Park Senior Center.
Okay, we'll go back to that one, sure. Have we voted?
I think we did that.
I thought we voted on Lincoln Park, did we not?
There's two rec centers. One is Lincoln Park, and the other one is the Pilot.
Pilot was the one we just did. So we haven't done Lincoln.
Is this item good? But this item's okay, so we can move forward to Lincoln Park then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did Lincoln Park.
We'll go to Lincoln Park. Okay, so Lincoln Park, much like the Pilot Center. Again, we're going to demolish this facility. It's got a lot of natural light, if you can tell, shining in through the brick walls. It's just an old facility. We're going to go ahead and, of course, demolish that one. We're going to put some more green space in and some natural enhancements through there, just like the other one, so. This, we're asking for $85,000 to move forward with.
Is the foundation being removed too?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion to recommend?
I recommend a motion.
Linda was first.
Second.
Christopher was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
What would our next item be? We should only have two left, right?
Frisco Road.
Okay, here we are. This is a unique opportunity for the city. Again, we're going to work with, partner with the county and the city of Yukon. Yukon, this has already gone through their council, and it has been approved, the agreement. The way that Frisco Road lays is half of it is, it's split down the center, north to south. And three-quarters of that is inside of the city of Oklahoma City limits, and then a quarter of that is within Yukon, and the county's helping as well. So, what the city will do is we'll supply funding for the materials. And then Yukon will help supply their portion of the materials, and then the county will utilize their workforces to install the roadway. So in this one, if you're familiar with Yukon at all, it's 10th Streets here out the south, and you've got this Target Supercenter over here. And if you just go one mile over from, what's a famous country singer, Garth Brooks Boulevard? You go over one mile, that's Frisco. Frisco comes all the way up to Highway 40. And so this is making that improvement from 40 south to there.
Questions? Okay, we'll recommend a, or a motion for recommendation? Doug's our first.
Second.
Crystal's our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
Okay, and our last request for the day, for the month, hopefully for the year, all right? Since we're already in December. This is our speed abatement program. It's been very successful. We initially put in some money, oh, it was about a year, year and a half ago, to move this forward. It's working with neighborhoods on speed signs that monitor your speed as you drive through. As you can see here, it's also working on the speed cushions, which is what's represented in the picture. The whole idea is through a neighborhood, through those collectors that are coming through, there's a slowdown that, the speed of the driver that may be living there or passing through, make it more safe. And we've gotten such a big response that we're down to, I think it's under five? About $1,500. So, it's been great. It's starting to pick up traction. This is one of those outreaches that we like to utilize. So, we're asking for $100,000, see how far we can go with that.
Questions?
So you said we've done this before?
Yes.
I don't remember talking about this.
That we moved forward with, yes, ma'am. It was 2022, yeah. You were still here.
I've slept since '22. Looks like a good project.
So it replaces that digital sign which shows your speed after driving?
They have that option, they have the speed table option, yeah. It's those two options that they can come in and participate with us on.
And then how do you decide where these go?
So we work with our traffic division, our traffic operations division, and they help determine the distance and everything else from intersections, driveways, what have you. And so, that resident, I mean, that neighborhood association works directly with Oklahoma City traffic.
And there's pre-approved speed cushions?
Yes. Everything goes through them.
The city's streets, so the HOA is not responsible for any? It's city streets, so the HOA is not responsible for any funds?
I'm sorry?
It's city streets, so the HOA is not responsible for any of the funds?
It's a partnership, so there's a point break at, I think it's 50/50 at this point.
Oh, they would.
They participate in.
If they want to participate, they have to put some funds up.
Yes, ma'am.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion to recommend?
I recommend the motion.
Linda's our first.
Second.
Doug's our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good to go.
Okay, so informational items, I'm going to hang out for a few minutes to help you all out before Stephen gets going. Or you want me to wait to?
What's that?
So the 2025 bond, just so we all know, is active. We're trying to get public outreach. So as such, if you just go in your Google search bar and you do Vision OKC 2025 Bond, it'll pull up the website, and in that website, you have the ability to place pins anywhere on the map. Please stay within the Oklahoma City bombers. And so we have some that are outside, I think one's in Nebraska. But what we want to do is, obviously, you're very familiar with the topics, the streets, bridges, drainage structures, police stations, fire stations, and what have you, parks. So please feel free to spread the word, as well as for yourselves to go in there. It's very interactive. That will be closing January 15th. So, and then at that time, we'll go ahead and get all those data points, and Kevin is part of our data team, will help process that, and we'll get it down, and then we'll start entering that into our scoring criteria for future projects for the 2025.
For the 2025 bond?
The GeoBond, the 2025.
Do you still have the same level for utility relocations as you have in the past?
One more time first.
Utility relocations? Is it the same percentage or the same level as it's always been?
So as far as our prediction on what our funding will be for design and the utility interaction with that. So as it pertains, most of these projects that are widens or intersection projects, we will go ahead and do our due diligence and look at those and see if there's already dedicated easements by said utility companies to see where we would be out money to produce that product, right? To make that widening or those intersection improvements. So since we don't have a finalized list, obviously, we're waiting on the public's engagement. At that time though, Chris, we'll go into that and start making that happen. No 60-inch water lines.
And Chad, you are talking about the authorization and not the sale, not 17s. This is the new authorization.
The vote towards the end of 2025.
And is that going to be north of where we have been in the past? The number? I won't mention the number, but in the past, it's been about a billion.
So obviously, we'll be increasing the, this bond was 964 million, 967. The new one will be more than that.
North of that.
North of that. So, but this is the time to have that input, we need that input. The city is too large for us to actually have staff to go drive this, you know, different times of the day to understand how traffic movements are working, or when school gets out, and how many kids are walking, if there needs to be sidewalks, what have you. So this is that time for you as residents to help us out. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I might just mention something. Since we moved to the new financial system, our reports come out a little bit different. They're live data. So the last column you see on the rolling 12 months will be as of November 26th. The October one went up from 90-something million because it was before the end of October when it's ran. So it kind of moves on, moves, but, so through October, we were 104 million, which is on par of where we have been. And then through November 26th, we were $91 million rolling 12 months average expenditure. So that would be up over $100 million.
So the, I guess going forward, you'll see an update from the previous month?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are at for a 2022 sale, we're at 76%. We're on the way to finish 85% by May, so we'll probably hit that probably in February-ish, maybe? I think that's when we hit it last year. It'll probably be there by February, and we're 37% for 2023 sale, and we're just getting started on the 2024 sale.
Anyone have any new business? So I'd like to extend an invitation. So over the next, I know Christmas is fun. I'd like to extend, if anyone wants to meet one-on-one with Kevin and I and Ryan, we'd like to meet with you guys and answer any of your questions that you have moving forward with new bond, and, or anything that you have, any questions about the 2017? Sorry, I'd probably have Stephen there just to help, help a little bit. So if you'd like that, you have my email, just please extend it, just send it on over, and we'll start working on that.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any items from committee members? Any citizens to be heard? I'll take a motion for adjournment. Linda, move? Doug, second. Yes, I'm second. Linda, and second by Doug. And I think we all agree. All right, thank you all. My first one, and we make it this long.